You've got a Teams link if you would like to join. It's in your Spalding County email. Click it and it'll bring you right in.
Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, October 23rd, Board of Zoning Public Hearing. I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Flowers-Taylor of District 1 to deliver the invocation and Commissioner Reginald Watts from District 3 to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
If you'll join me, please. Father, we come to you this evening in thanksgiving, thanking you for the life that we have, with fresh water to drink, clean air to breathe, and a safe environment in which to exist. We ask you to be in this room tonight as we deliberate, as we hear the comments and the business that we have to handle here for the Spalding County Board of Commissioners. We ask you to allow us to have wisdom and understanding and patience and provide justice for all those that are presented before us here tonight. We ask you to protect our first responders from the 911 operators, police chief, fire, sheriff's department, all of those who put themselves in harm's way or the very first people that we meet when we are in a tragedy. We ask you to bless them and protect them. These things we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. This is a public hearing. There will be a number of applications that we move through. We will open up a public hearing for each one of them and then close the public hearing and then move our way through. I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is 20 minutes on the pro side and 20 minutes on the con side to be able to do this. For those of you that haven't been here before, let me kind of walk you through how this will work. Over on my far left is our zoning attorney. Next is the Director of Community Development, which is, for us, the staff expert on every one of these that are going to come through. Then you'll see four commissioners up here. The vice chair is joining us by Teams meeting and will vote when the time comes on each one of the issues. All right. Item number four, new business. Consider the impact fee waiver for new DFAX building in city of Griffin, Greenbelt Drive, tax parcel number 03901004R. Mr. Allen?
Good evening. This is not a public hearing like the rest. This is consideration, as you said, of an impact fee waiver for a new DFAX building in the city of Griffin. Spalding County works with Griffin on their impact fees. We received this recently. We computed out the fee as we always do for them. They responded back with a request for a waiver due to the fact, in their words, that this is a public service facility serving the citizens of the respective county. It will be owned by a nonprofit at first and then the state. So I have outlined here your various developments that have an impact fee imposed on them. There's also an exemption section for extraordinary projects. I do not see in there any criteria for excluding or exempting a building of this nature, even though, as they said, it serves a public function. These buildings, regardless of who owns them or what entity runs them, they still have impacts on the county in terms of the roads and EMS and that sort of thing. So there's still an impact regardless whether it's a government building or a private building. So staff is recommending denial of the waiver.
Okay.
Anyone here speak?
That's...
Yes, there is someone here. Please forgive me, I'm trying my best to get the vice chair on the phone.
All right. Please step forward, give us your name and address.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Douglas Chandler. I'm here on behalf of Efficient Government Public Service. I'm out of Alpharetta, Georgia, 480 McGinnis Ferry Road, Suite 502. Name of my firm is Chandler Law. As was pointed out by the county manager, there are three reasons why these types of impact fees have been waived in 14 of the other buildings that Efficient Government Public Service has done across the state. One of those is that it is a public service building, serving all the constituents of the county. Number two, during the financing term, Efficient Government Public Service is a nonprofit Georgia entity that will own and develop the building. And then at the end of the leasing term, the building goes back to the state. We suggest that, of course, it's within your discretion, but we suggest that the benefit and the extraordinary benefit that this building is going to have on the constituents of the county outweighs any impact, marginal impact, that it would have on the county. So we're here respectfully requesting that the impact fee be waived. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chandler? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to deny.
Okay.
I see.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, yes, I want to make a comment. Wellstar Spalding came to us about two months ago and they're building a new cancer treatment area off the very front of the hospital. And they asked for us to waive the $75,000 impact fee. I think they provide a public service, but we didn't waive their stuff. If this were the state of Georgia building this building, I would feel obligated to do that, but it's not. And we haven't set a precedent by doing that for anyone else other than actual state property. So for that reason, I submit that we deny it.
So I have a motion and I have a second.
I agree with Gwen. This is, it's very akin to opportunity. It's not a, I disagree with him that this isn't going to provide an extraordinary service or that this is going to be a great, you know, help the public good in general, but so will a dozen other things that could be built. And I think it would set a bad precedent to waive impact fees. So, you know, impact fees are to make up for people getting to make use of all the properties and amenities that taxpayers have already paid for, that they haven't paid into. And I don't think it would be fair to begin waiving these, impact fees for people. I don't think it would be fair to the taxpayers that have paid in to allow people to waive these fees, even if they're going to have a positive benefit. I would like to assume that anyone who builds a house here or builds any kind of business here would have a positive benefit on their community, but, you know, to make up for them not having paid in taxes over the years and paid for our parks and our amenities and stuff, that's what the impact fees are for. So I think it would be unfair for us to waive it for anybody.
Okay. Any more discussion? Now, we have one person, since the vice chair is on the phone, I'm going to be using "I" voting tonight, so everybody can kind of get ready. If I say "hand," please hand and voice to be able to... All right, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes carry. Thank you, Douglas. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two, public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Public hearing, application 2515S, Brightmore Land Holdings LLC, owner 3223 Noonan Road, parcel 26801006, located in landlot 15 of the Second Land District, consisting of approximately 101.99 acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for an in-house daycare for children of employees.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing for the purpose of hearing from those who have signed the petition to speak in support or opposition of the application. To remind everybody, there's 20 minutes on each side. If one person, first person starts and speaks for 20 minutes, the rest of the people don't get to speak, just to make sure everybody understands. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Thank you. We're now in public hearing. Director?
Yes, sir. Before we start, as the county manager said, this is for a request for a daycare just for the children of employees that happen to work at Brightmore, a place for them to stay just in that facility.
Okay. Dr. Ledbetter, do we have people who have signed up for this?
Mr. Chair, we do. We have one person who has signed up this evening for this application, Chuck Brown. If you would, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Chuck Brown. My home address, 170 Wingate, Sarcroon Festival. I'm administrator at Brightmore and president of Brightmore Land Holdings. We're at 3247 Noonan Road. And we're just asking for approval for, like Mr. Allen said, a daycare for our employees. We're using the end of the building, the old nursing home from 1965 that is now a personal care home. And it's been just used for storage and maintenance and everything for years. And so we've cleaned it up and we've got about, we've got five rooms in there that we want to just offer daycare to our employees. It'll be open from 6:30 to 7:00 every day to accommodate day shift and the 12-hour shift, 7:00 A. to 7:00 P. And then we may expand the hours later, but as of right now, that's the hours we want to operate it just for our employees.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate it. All right. Nobody else to speak?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to come out of...
Motion to come out of a public hearing.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
We're out of public hearing. Director?
Yes, sir. Staff does recommend approval for this with the following four approval conditions. Applicant must confirm that all rules from Georgia Department of Human Resources are being complied with. Number two, all necessary building permits shall be obtained and shall pass all building official and fire marshal inspections. Or three, service shall be restricted to employees only for children whose parent or primary caretaker is employed by Brightmore and not open to the general public. And four, shall remain in accessory use to the existing principal use on the property, which is, of course, the hospital.
All right.
Planning Commission recommended for approval with staff conditions back on September 30th.
All right. Chuck, you're good with all those?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Eyes have it. Motion passes. All right. Public hearing.
Mr. Chair, item number four, public hearings, application 2503, Flume SS Land Holdings Group LLC, owner 5 Witten Avenue, Griffin, Georgia 30223, located in landlot 178 of the Second Land District, parcel number 12208007, consisting of 23.38 acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C2 zone property, thus requiring a future land use map amendment. Application 2520Z, SS Land Holding Group LLC, owner 5 Witten Avenue, Griffin, Georgia 30223, located in landlot 178 of the Second Land District, parcel number 12208007, consisting of 23.38 acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C2 zone property for a wider array of commercial and industrial uses.
Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Do you want to consolidate? These are both related, consolidate for the hearing and then vote separately?
Yes. Okay, with everybody to consolidate these two? Okay. Any dissent? Okay. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing with the consolidated of these two applications?
Motion to go into public hearing.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All right, eyes have it. We're now in public hearing. Director?
Yes, sir. This is the first of two tonight of Flume amendments in the same area. This one tonight is Witten Avenue. The other one, we'll speak of later, is High Falls Road, but they concern the Mill Village Overlay District area. So we'll hear now from the applicant and others.
Okay. Dr. Ledbetter, do we have people who have signed up?
We do. We have two who have signed up, Stephen, Stefan Paul Huss and Lisa McCower?
Moore Shower.
Moore Shower. Please forgive me.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Moore Shower. I'm an attorney with a law firm, Berman Fink Van Horn, and I represent Mr. Paul Huss in this application. It's a preliminary matter, and I hate to do this, but I think that...
We need your address, Ms. Moore Shower.
3475 Piedmont Avenue, Atlanta, 30305.
Okay, thank you.
I need to ask that Commissioner Flowers-Taylor recuse herself from the case because there's now pending litigation between her and Mr. Paul Huss that I assume she's aware of, but I'm not sure if she is.
You don't have to ask, it's already done.
Okay. You've already recused herself?
Yes.
I didn't hear that. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, sorry. So this case involves a rezoning application for property that was Zone C2 that the county says is part of the Mill Village Overlay District. Mr. Paul Huss, when he was looking at buying this property, he consulted, and he can tell you what he did, but he did consult with the county. He looked at the zoning map and did not see any overlay district on that zoning map, and it showed that it was C2 zoned property. Then he spoke with Mr. Allen, who's been very candid, but Mr. Allen told him it was also Zone C2, and we have an email exchange from Mr. Allen about that, showing that it was Zone C2, because Mr. Paul Huss was very, wanted to be sure he had the zoning correct. So I have an email from Mr. Allen on April 2nd, which states that the property is zoned for C2 manufacturing. And with that, well, Mr. Paul Huss entered into an agreement to buy the property, was under contract by that date. So later, a few, like a week later, on April, let me find it, April 9th, so approximately a week later, Mr. Allen was candid again and he corrected himself and he told Mr. Paul Huss that he, that he was, he didn't say he was mistaken, but he said the property, he said, "And looking at this further, this is the Mill Village Overlay District, which only allows residential uses. This would hold sway over the C2 permitted uses." And I have these emails, which I'd like to put into the record, but he'd already gone under contract for the property, so there was a problem with that. He's under contract now to purchase property that he thought was C2 zoned. Plus, he also had seen the zoning map, which showed it as C2. The zoning map does not show it as being in the Mill Village Overlay District. And we also have concerns about the way that the Mill Village Overlay District legislation was enacted, and with that, we think that this property is still Zone C2. So under C2, Mr. Paul Huss can utilize this property with very specific uses that are listed in the zoning code under C2. And he, it's truly our opinion that he really doesn't need to go through this rezoning process, but we were told to do that. He is in the process now, but he wants to remove, if this is in fact in the overlay district, he wants to have it removed from the overlay district so that he can bring it back to the economic viability that this property had years and years ago. So the purpose of the overlay district, Mill Village Overlay District, talks about the historical nature of this property. But if you look at this property, this specific property was not residential property, this was the mill property. This is where the mill was actually located. The residences were around it, but this is not where the residential property was. So if you really want to go back historically, you should put it back into its economically viable use so that people who live around it can utilize it as a work, like a work, live, play area. That's his vision. I mean, if he can, if the county would allow him to continue it under C2, he could turn this property into something that the residents around it could utilize. And there are some homes around it, but there's also manufacturing around it. There's a railroad right across the street from it. So in order for him to adhere to the overlay district regulations, which says it's got to be residentially built, he will have to, it's not going to be economically doable for him. He's going to have to spend so much money, because of the mill being there, we think there possibly could be some environmental things that have to be looked at. He might have to enter into a Phase 2 environmental study, and that could entail a lot of money for him. And if he has to do it as a residential use, that's even more restrictive because you surely don't want people moving in there with kids playing in dirt that was contaminated from the mill. Or, and now it's also been used for, there's been other uses, which trucking and some other pretty industrial uses have been going on on that property for a while. The county's allowed concrete, I think concrete, he can speak more to what's there, but there's some pretty heavy industrial uses going on on that property right now. So we believe that that use should be continued, or the C2 uses should be continued because of what's already been going on there and the probably astronomical amount that it's going to cost him to redevelop this property or into single-family homes that somebody will buy. Because not only, you know, if you want him to build the homes or you want some developer to come in and build the homes, they've got to be sellable or they're going to be vacant. And the code says they have to be 1,000 square feet, but before he even starts, he's going to have astronomical costs to build those houses out. And if nobody wants to, those homes might turn out to be $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 each. We don't even know if there's a market for that at this location. So you've zoned the property, if it is in the overlay district, for a purpose that is not economically viable for this area and for him as a property owner. And because of that, we think there's some issues with it. So we would ask you to consider the facts that I just stated, that he was told it wasn't in the overlay district initially, and it is not on the zoning map in the overlay district. It is Zone C2 on your zoning map. And it was when he looked at it. We have concerns about how it was enacted, the overlay district legislation, and the fact that it was historically the place where economic revenue was generated for this area, not residential property. It was not where people lived. And he would like to bring it back into a state where people who live in the area can come in, work, make money. There are so many things that are allowed under C2. He could have a gym, he could have a dance studio, he could have a bakery, he could have a restaurant, he could have, it does allow... have a restaurant, he could have, um, it does allow for gas stations, um, there, you can have a bread, bed and breakfast, you could have, um, all, uh, all kinds of things. I mean, the list is like a hundred and something long. There's so many things that could happen there that the people who live around it currently or people who, who come to live there eventually could use it for, but to put homes there where there isn't a market for it and to require him to have to build homes there just doesn't make any sense. And that property is going to stay vacant because I don't know that there'll be a buyer for it if that's the, if that's the restriction on it. So we're asking you to please don't keep him in this overlay. Take it out, if, if it is in fact in the overlay, and I'm not, I'm not, um, I'm not giving up an objection to the fact that I don't think it's in the overlay. I don't, I don't think it's in the overlay. I don't think it's properly zoned as a Mill Village overlay district property. I think it's C-two, but we are asking you to take that confirmation, make it, make it an official decision that it is still C-two, and let him go forward with what he was going to do when he purchased it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Anybody else?
Um...
Mr. Paul Huss?
If y'all have any questions, Mr. Paul Huss can answer.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have eleven minutes left.
How much?
Eleven minutes.
Is there anybody else?
There's no one else who has signed up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Can I put this?
All right. Do I have a motion to come out of, uh, public hearing?
Motion to come out.
Can I put these in the record, the emails?
Yes. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, all right, we're out of public hearing.
We got one upstairs.
Director?
Okay. Uh, so with two of these tonight pertaining to the Mill Village overlay, it seems to be almost like a referendum on the Mill Village overlay. Concerns with this is it may start a domino effect of other people, uh, within the overlay wanting to do the exact same thing. They have a right to ask for it for sure, but, uh, we need to be reminded again of what the intent was for this overlay, and right now I'm speaking only about the, the Flume item. Um, the Flume, the Mill Village overlay future intent, we, as we all know, is residential to refurbish this area, have a mill-style housing, have more quality housing in this area where it used to be and is not now. There's, needs a lot of renovation to this, so that is the future intent of the Mill Village overlay here. Um, so based on that, manufacturing uses do not align with the future land use map on this, which has the area as an activity center. And I'll read that to you. Activity centers are characterized by compact, walkable, and higher density or intensity developments. These areas are appropriate for a mix of uses to contribute to a live-work-play environment. Future development should also emphasize high-quality building and site design, including dedicated, open civic space. Uh, primary land uses are moderate-density detached, single-family houses, civic benefit, mixed-use or commercial in accordance with a redevelopment plan. Uh, so R-two, R-four, C-one-A, these are uses that are compatible with the future intent of this area as a, the East Griffin Activity Center. Granted, there, there's some of these C-two uses, these C-two zonings from the past have been there a long time, but they are not compatible C-two manufacturing uses with the future use for this area as per the, uh, future land use map. Um, it should be noted, if, if the board decides to take this out of the Mill Village overlay, uh, the Mill Village overlay total size will be shrunk by about fourteen percent. If you approve the other one tonight, that's another additional seventeen percent, so it's conceivable you could have about close to one-third of the Mill Village overlay area being taken out of the overlay. So just want to bring that to your attention. Um, if a project had some exceptional, uh, value to the local area in terms of a lot of jobs or something along those lines, perhaps the board could see to it, but, uh, I would ask both applicants tonight, uh, you know, does your plan involve a lot of local jobs and a lot of extraordinary benefit to the community, so?
Okay.
For denial for the, the Flume amendment.
All right, recommendation. Uh, zoning attorney, uh, is there an issue between when, uh, the director sent an email and then corrected himself? Uh, is that a invalid way of doing it? Are we stuck with that because he did it the first time?
Answer to that's no, you're not stuck with it.
Okay. All right.
And it wasn't a correction, it was an addition to what I said. I did not say it was not in an overlay before I brought up the fact because I looked at the map myself that it was in one, so I did not state at any time it was not in an overlay, so.
Okay.
Let me correct the correction.
Do I have a motion to deny?
Um, I'm gonna make the motion to deny, and this is something I would like to put on our workshop at the first year to kind of do a review over some of the overlays, um, just to go over them, but this is, I just don't see it being a good fit for the area at this time.
Okay. I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I see.
Would it be better to table instead of deny if we want to talk about it first?
I, I'm not rescinding my motion at this time. We'll continue to deny it. We can change.
His motion continues to be the same, to deny. He wants to talk about all the overlays, not just, uh, the Mill Village overlay, uh, later. All right, do I have a second?
I see.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I was speaking, did you two say aye?
Aye.
To deny? Both of you?
Yes.
Okay. James, James?
I'm, I'm opposed to a denial. I'm gonna, oh, no.
Okay. I have, uh, three ayes and one no, uh, so the motion carries to, uh, not pass to deny the Flume. All right. Let's go to the second one.
Since you're denied the Flume and the ordinance requires that the Flume be amended before considering the rezoning, the second application is moot.
All right, so that takes care of both of those, right?
Takes care of six.
All right. Item number seven, public hearing?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Number seven, public hearings, application twenty-five zero-four, Flume and Anthony Cornaccia, owner, seven fifty-five High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero-two-two-three, located in landlot one seventy-seven of the second land district, parcel number one-one-nine-zero-two-zero-four-seven, consisting of twenty-six point zero-nine acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village overlay district designation from the C-two zone property, thus requiring a future land use map amendment. Application twenty-five-one, sorry, twenty-five-twenty-one-Z, Anthony Cornaccia, uh, owner, seven fifty-five High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero-two-two-three, located in landlot one seventy-seven of the second land district, parcel number one-one-nine-zero-two-zero-four-seven, consisting of twenty-six point oh-nine acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village overlay district designation from the C-two zone property for a wider array of commercial and industrial uses.
I would entertain a motion to open the combined public hearing for the purpose of hearing from those who have signed the petition to speak in support or opposition of the application, twenty-minute max side rule. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into public hearing.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most, we're now in public hearing. Uh, Director?
So this property is also in the Mill Village overlay, hence the Flume amendment is north of the property you just considered, at seven fifty-five High Falls Road. Uh, to my knowledge, the, uh, owner, he would like a wider array of uses, but has not presented me with a specific plan for the property.
All right, uh, as we get into this, well, let me await to the, all right, has anybody signed up to sign?
Yes, sir, they have. Uh, Steve, uh, Stefan Paul Huss and Lisa.
There's no use.
All right.
All right. We have a, you're recusing yourself on this one also?
No, I don't have a conflict on this one.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
Were those the only people?
Those were the, those were the only two, yes, sir.
All right, so Mr. Cornaccia is not here.
Okay, all right. All right. Do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
I'm not supporting a public hearing.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, we're back out of, uh, public hearing. Uh, Director?
So this is in the same East Griffin Activity Center, uh, to consider for your possible Flume amendment. Uh, again, he wants a wider array of commercial industrial uses. He's not really giving me a plan for that. Um, as I just told you with the other application, the industrial uses don't really align with the future uses or the intent of the Mill Village overlay with this, and if you approve this one, it would take up approximately seventeen percent of the Mill Village overlay being out of the overlay, so.
And the staff recommendation?
Uh, denial.
And planning commission, planning commissions?
Denial likewise.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny application twenty-five dash twenty-one-Z.
All right, is that the right one? All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Which motion? What was the application? Because the Flume would come first.
Right.
Uh, twenty-five dash twenty-one-Z?
It's, uh, application twenty-five zero-four Flume.
Okay, so, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'll rescind that request. I would like to make another motion to approve number eight, application twenty-five dash oh-four Flume.
Are, are you approving? You're, you're approving the Flume?
No, denying the Flume.
Oh, that, that was your motion, ma'am.
Okay. You need me to make my motion over?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to make, to make a motion to deny number eight, application twenty-five dash zero-four Flume.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I see.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do want to say something. That property has been, um, a problem. Uh, over the last ten years, it has been, um, covered in automobile vehicles, different kinds of construction stuff. We've had multiple incidences where planning and development and code enforcement have had to come there because the building was not secure. Um, I don't have a lot of confidence that something positive would come out of changing that zoning for that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. We have, uh, one, two, three, four ayes and one opposed. Motion carries? Uh, since we didn't do that, do we have to do nine?
No, the same rule would apply since the Flume amendment is required to seek rezoning.
All right.
The Flume denial.
Item number ten, public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Public, uh, item number ten, public hearings, application twenty-five twenty-two-Z, five-eight-five Spalding Investment LLC, owner, fifty South McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero-two-two-three, located in landlot fifteen of the third land district, parcel number two-one-nine-zero-six-zero-zero-one, consisting of one hundred twenty-seven point four-five acres. The applicant is requesting to rezon from AR-one agricultural residential and R-two single-family residential to C-one-C manufacturing light for a proposed data center campus. Application twenty-five zero-eight-S, five-eight-five Spalding Investment LLC, owner, fifty South McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero-two-two-three, located in landlot fifteen of the third land district, parcel number two-one-nine-zero-six-zero-zero-one, consisting of one hundred twenty-seven point four-five acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a proposed data center campus per C-one-C manufacturing light requirements.
I would entertain a motion to go into the combined public hearing for the propose, purpose of hearing for those who have signed the petition to speak in support or opposition to the application, twenty minutes maximum per side. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion to go into, uh, public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Say that again, James.
This is, this is for a combined public hearing for everything for and against the data center. I mean, I know it's on there a few times, we're combining it to one, right?
That's correct. Under House, uh, Commissioner, under House Bill fourteen oh-five, you're allowed to consolidate a special exception and rezoning application into one hearing. You will have to vote on them separately.
All right, uh, and we voted and he, all right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Five, zero. All right, uh, we're now in public hearing. Director?
So this is the same application, both a rezoning and special exception that you heard, uh, back in Au, late August. Um, at the time, there was some concern about certain, uh, zoning conditions and some more information being provided. Uh, since it's now two months later, almost, they have done that. We have been, uh, improved the conditions, more cohesive conditions. There are some other items that they have provided as well that I'll talk about at length after the public hearing.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Ledbetter, did any people sign up for?
Yes, sir, we have, um, we have a few people who have signed up, uh, for or against, and I would ask that, uh, I'm just going to call out the for, and if you will state your name when you come up, just recognize that there's only twenty minutes for and then twenty minutes against. Uh, so if you're against the application for five-eight-five Spalding Investment at, um, fifty South McDonough Road, uh, if you will, whoever's first, if you will come forward?
If you're for or against?
Against.
Okay.
Against.
I guess I'm the first. You're good, please.
All right, if you will tell me your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Ron Hoffman, and I live at one-thirty Milner Avenue, approximately four-point-one-one miles from this proposed site at fifty South McDonough Road. First, under OCGA thirty-six dash sixty-six dash four, the public is entitled to a meaningful hearing based on a complete record. The staff confirms that the development of regional impact, or DRI, is still noted as ongoing, and key items such as the DRI findings, the FAA airport approach documentation, a project-specific acoustic noise study, traffic impacts, and confirmed utility capacity are not in the record for the public to review before you vote. Second, under OCGA thirty-six dash sixty-seven-A, any official with a direct or indirect financial interest must disclose and recuse. Given the county's institutional interest in tax revenue for this project, due process requires heightened neutrality. Third, nearby neighborhoods will face cumulative impacts, noise from large generator arrays, twenty-four-hour lighting, traffic staging, stormwater and cooling system demands, especially with another approved data center site one-point-seven-five miles away. Compatibility and mitigation must be evaluated upfront, not deferred. For these reasons, I respectfully request denial or at a minimum that you table both applications until the following are completed and placed onto the public record. Number one, final DRI report and all required mitigation. Number two, FAA airport approach and airspace determinations. Number three, an independent acoustic noise study with cumulative analysis and enforceable decibel limits. Number four, traffic and utility capacity confirmations, water, sewer, electric, gas, including cooling water engineering summaries. If the board proceeds despite these gaps, I request that all staff conditions be adopted and strengthened to include the pre-decision studies that I just listed, independent post-construction verification, and strict generator testing limits, dark-skylighting, and a robust decommissioning bond. Thank you very much, I yield back my time.
I'm David Floyd at thirty-five North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh-two-two-three, and, uh, I will start with the Mansfield video.
Your house is here, and the data center's right there.
It's less than four hundred yards.
The data center that's now the Morris's next-door neighbor happens to be owned by Meta, the company you know for Facebook and Instagram, but has also been breaking into artificial intelligence.
We're on a well here, and we started having issues with our well. Have to replace the hot water heater. I've replaced two washing machines and a dishwasher because of the sediment that's coming in.
Wow, and that's just from the water coming out of your faucet?
Yeah, it's overwhelming. You really feel like you are up against this huge wall that you can't penetrate. There's nothing that, that you can do and they don't care. They've destroyed the environment, taken down all the trees across the road.
Beautiful pines, beautiful forest.
The light pollution is.
You don't have to have a night light in the house. You can walk around the house at night and see everything. It's that bright.
There are serious costs at communities once data centers are operational too.
On May first, Georgia Power residential rate payers experienced a twenty-four percent rate increase. Just since twenty twenty-three, Georgia Power has raised rates six times.
But the thing is, AI processing demands are much larger. One report showed that a Google search using a chat GPT-like AI feature used thirty times as much power as a normal Google search. In the next three years, data center use of electricity is expected to double or even triple. And the state of Georgia has the fastest data center growth in the entire country.
The two biggest reasons data centers come to Georgia are that electricity rates for industrials, which is the class that they're in, are forty-two percent below the national average. And the second biggest one are data center tax breaks. They received over a hundred and eighty million dollars in tax breaks last year.
Our electric bill was maybe two fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, and now it's probably four hundred.
Your electricity bill has doubled.
Wow, it's been a struggle.
Every month it's a struggle. Jeff would like to retire, but he keeps working because we have to pay our bills.
Do you think that people should have to pay more because of data centers?
No, absolutely not. They should pay for that difference. It's hard enough for a regular person to pay their electric bill as it is. I don't think that's right at all.
Okay, and, uh, now, uh, the next, uh, PowerPoint, again, I'm David Floyd at thirty-five North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three. And once we get to this PowerPoint, I'll be able to begin speaking. So, go to the next slide and we have, our concerns include health and environmental risks, safety risk, economic risk. Uh, next slide, the average noise level at a data center is above ninety-six decibels, the equivalent of listening to a motorcycle all, up close all day for fifty-two hours a week. According to the CDC, any sound above eighty-five decibels can cause hearing damage. Continuous low frequencies can affect people's hearing and psyche and cannot be blocked by walls. Next slide. Let's go back one. Okay, never mind. There we go. Just let it play. It's a video. This is the sound of no data center. Going on, children and adolescents have more susceptibility, susceptibility to conditions such as depression, anxiety, suicide, and behavioral problems due to noise pollution. Long-term noise exposure is associated with cardiovascular events like heart attacks and strokes. A continu- a continuous hum of a fifty-two decibels can harm local wildlife, including pets. And next slide, and how will light pollution be addressed? The following photos show residents in Mansfield, Georgia. We saw that before. Go to the next slide. And you can just see that again. Uh, imagine, yes, right there. So, that, that's very difficult. Alright, going on, seventy-five percent of highly distorted power readings show up to fifty miles, show up within fifty miles of major data center operations, leading to sparks and even home fires. Grid operators have documented more than thirty near miss incidents since twenty twenty. A large data center can consume as much electricity as one hundred thousand households. There are approximately twenty-six thousand households in Spalding County, which could raise energy usage by up to five times. The cost of electricity could increase by an average of nineteen percent by twenty twenty-eight due to demand growth. Unless the Georgia Public Service Commission holds to their promise to protect the average rate payer, much of the additional cost could be passed on to utility customers. Often fewer than one hundred direct jobs are created for an average data center. And the average lifespan of a data center is approximately ten to fifteen years. After its completion, the number of employees needed at the center drops by approximately ninety percent. Though affecting districts two and five directly, other districts will not be immune from the aforementioned effects. As an educator, my current school's mission statement includes these words. We partner with families in educating and inspiring their children. When I am in the classroom, I consider myself representative of the parent, making sure that I teach what is expected. In a similar manner, we, citizens of Spalding County, want you to not only hear our voices, but consider the logic of the data that we present to you. Many large corporations have much, have much more capital than the average local government. And there is the danger of those large corporations dictating policy, whether intentional or not. I strongly encourage you to vote no or to table this matter to look at the data again and, and require an environmental survey before proceeding any further. The health, safety, and fitness finances of too many people are in blind, uh, to fast track this agenda. And the last slide, I encourage you to scan the QR code that's on your sheet in the packet that I sent on Monday, uh, so you can look at more of that. Uh, there's a couple more things. There's even a new sheet with eleven items, eleven specific questions that I encourage you to look at. We would like, uh, you know, I would like for you to respond to us at some point with those eleven specific questions for Project Spalding. And, uh, thank you, and I yield to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, Wimpy, one south, one sixty-four South Walkers Mill Road, Griffin, Georgia. I'm gonna play his play, but I'm gonna play it one more time. It will play. That's the data center. That's what you're asking these people to listen to twenty-four seven, seven days a week. If you vote yes, you can't take that noise. You can't correct that noise level. You can't muffle that noise pollution.
I had a encounter last year. Don't worry, it's there.
You can't do anything about the carbon emissions. The tax revenue you keep saying we're gonna get does not outweigh the cons of the pollution, the noise, the electricity. These people, all of us, will be playing, paying higher prices. Everybody says Georgia Powers are going to hold off for three years. Well, in three years, then you got the data center coming. Guess what? Our rates are going up. That freeze does nothing for us. Think about it. You've got Newton County that has said no to data centers. Jones County has now said no to data centers. Monroe County has said no to data centers. Six other counties surrounding you that have put in a data center, Fayette County being one of them, have now put a moratorium on any more data centers till they look at what the effects are in their county. Please do not overburden this county with any more data centers. You've already put an airport out there. You've already put eighteen warehouses down Arthur K. Bolton. The last meeting, one of the responses from Mr. Dutton was, I don't know why y'all are so concerned about the noise. There's a jet airport going to be out there. A jet airport will have general aviation and some jet traffic in this county. Guess what? Jets fly in. They turn off their noise. You don't hear it. We are going to hear this twenty-four seven. They've already talked about the health effects, the environmental effects. Please vote no. No data centers in this county.
Good evening. My name's Samuel Weeks and I live at one hundred Ramosa Road, Griffin, Georgia. I come to you tonight along with my fellow citizens, two hundred and eighty-nine data center petition signatures, and with the knowledge that you are torn over whether or not to approve this exception for data center. I can imagine that promises of large tax dollars can be very tempting. However, I want to speak against this and any other data centers in Spalding County. I will admit that initially I was a little ignorant to how bad data centers were for any community when I first opposed them. However, as I did more research, I found out they're even worse than I could imagine. I have found some interesting facts in my research on data centers. There are two data centers being opened every month in the U.S. Georgia's the sixth fastest market for data centers, and Georgia data centers are exempt from sales and use tax, which means more money in their pockets and less through taxes. Based on research, it's determined that data center hardware becomes obsolete within three to ten years. There are fifty full-time jobs on average. Data centers consume as much power as entire cities and that cost is passed on to consumers, no matter the talking points. Data centers use backup power and they're usually diesel generators that are loud and produce toxic gases. Almost every new data center in it is AI-driven, not data storage, so we don't need them to enjoy the internet or store our photos online. These new, or conditions data centers look for, fast internet location, and Spalding has fiber. And the data centers developers look for what they call quote-unquote powered land, which is large tracks near substations like the one on Tommichichi. They will build in clusters as large as they can. I want to talk about questionable tactics that data centers use on these next two slides. They use NDAs, the worst thing. They're quote-unquote trade secrets between data centers and state and even local governments, even maybe the commissioners, surveyors, construction, power companies, you name it. This keeps information limited, so residents can't fight against it, and no one really knows the whole story, but guess, the data center. They use no-name LLCs or shell companies when the true backers are Amazon, Google, Meta, QTS, in an attempt to secure more tax breaks at a quote-unquote small company and fewer expectations. These centers usually seek delayed tax tricks for ten to fifteen years, and the hardware becomes obsolete in three to ten years, well before the fifteen-year mark. They target rural or agricultural and even residential land as it's cheaper than commercial and larger in size. Then they get it rezoned and use it to build huge and loud facilities. These developers, these developers hop from county to county seeking an approval from a board of commissioners. When they get it, they use that approval for endless and overwhelming additions and cluster building. Data centers directly coordinate with power companies for expansion, planning, and support. Georgia Power and these companies are making money at the cost of residents. The actual water use is actually a secret. Utility agencies across the companies have sued to keep the actual number hidden from public, and one week ago, even California governor vetoed a bill requiring data centers to report the true numbers. Due to the sheer explosion of these type of centers and the lack of zoning to contain them or ensure they're doing everything with the community in mind, these data centers attempt to bypass or mitigate any environmental impact studies that are not absolutely required of them. So you, as board members, will make a decision based on limited information. Now let's talk about questionable benefits we get. Long-term jobs do not really exist. Sure, you get some short-term construction work, but when the facility's built, even the largest one in the nation now only employs a hundred and fifty people. On average, you employ around fifty people. Most of these employees are from out of town and even remote workers. There are some security jar, guards, but AI even arguments those, so they don't need as many. Increase power to residents. Georgia Power's increased rates six times since twenty twenty-three. They're building massive infrastructure upgrades to be able to support what they see as a data center boom, and we will pay for that. Georgia Power has promised a three-year freeze, but they have broken promises in the past. They're still gonna raise rates next year for quote-unquote storm damages, and in three years, what will happen to us all? And last, there's no cer- certain economic future, and there's a potential of an AI bust or bubble based on AI breakthrough and inability to make money off of it. What will happen to these data center sites then? Will they just be abandoned? I know our county leaders mean well, but we don't even have zoning protections for data centers, and the data center owners have their resources, money, lawyers, and time to push for more and more of these non-stop. Here are four concerns regarding the proposed zoning for data centers. There's an unapproved draft, nothing approved or published. It's open season for data centers to push whatever they want. There are no sound regulations or required requirements in the proposal even, considering permissible sound levels, enforcement mechanisms, or penalties for violations. Since this is one of the major issues with data centers, why is that not even mentioned? If there are some added, then financial penalties that leads along will not help as these large companies can pay fines at, at cost to, to residents. There should be operational shutdowns required until noises, noise issues are addressed. And finally, there's inadequate decommissioning enforcement as these proposals for decommissioning, there are proposals for decommissioning, but what happens if AI goes bust and the data center market collapses? Will these centers, under shell company names, of course, just abandon these without any repercussions? So what do Spalding County leaders have envisioned for our county? Data centers look for powered land, which translates as larger tracts of land, at least eighty acres, using residential or agriculture that has a substation nearby for power usage. Are all of these areas on this slide gonna be data centers in our future? Surveys are already being conducted on the two hundred and ninety acres off of Tommichichi, and the current owner of the property in discussion today also owns a property directly across AKB that is agricultural, though one's indicated with a star on the map. Will we be here again fighting later against a data center on those as well? The trend in other areas says yes. I've also heard it said that agricultural land's not really being used for that purpose anyway, but four of these properties on this map is or were being used for cattle or hay, so this is re- land rezonings affecting our farmers. I know you think this is my opinion, which it would be without sources and facts to bake my comments up, so let me summarize some sources. I will note that all of these coming are dated within the past year and most are within three months, so this is the latest and greatest information available. Data centers are noisy. They create noise that's harmful to humans over a prolonged period of time. The noise is between fifty-five and eighty-five decibels and is even more noticeable in rural areas where this current proposal is located. There's a, not a lot of specific resource on data center noise and long-term effects, but they generate low-frequency sounds that have very long wavelengths and are not absorbed by air molecules. A noise would go right over a wall. This is an example of, uh, this is an example of an unmitigated and mitigated noise data center. Even with the mitigation, the noise hunt, look, the, the low-frequency humming can travel miles away from a data center, miles. Noise is not the only thing that is worrisome. As water is negatively affected as well by data centers, the exact amount is usually, guess what, a trade secret, but they can easily use up to twenty-five percent of a local community's water supply. In this article, it talks about how a fifty-acre site in Mansfield, Georgia, which is less than half the size of the property we're talking about tonight, spiked water usage by two hundred million gallons per year. Now, even closed-loop systems, they use chemicals instead of water. I know they're talking about closed-loop. Not only is water usage immense, the negative effects of, on citizens are real. This article talks about a lady in Mansfield that has no water pressure, lots of sediment since metadata center moved in nearby. There's also a Flint Riverkeeper executive that's concerned about the water quality from a runoff from another site owned by QTS. So water quality and amounts used, which are essential to all of us, are threatened by more data centers. The myth that data centers are paying for electricity is the easiest to disprove. I have numerous articles showing this direct correlation between the explosion of data centers and the accretion of electricity because of data center usage. This is just not affect local residents either, but guess what? The closer to a data center you are, the higher the impact. On Blue, one Bloomberg analysis from September found that electricity costs as much as two hundred and sixty-seven percent more for a single month than it did five years ago in areas located near data centers activity. This article, based on modeling from the Open Energy Outlook Initiative, found that data center and crypto mining electricity demand is projected to grow by three hundred and fifty percent by twenty thirty. Without intervention, massive price spikes followed by political backlash will become more frequent. This is an NEADA study for the U.S. government, and it found that data centers you currently use four point four percent of the total electricity in America. That is expected to increase to between six point seven and twelve percent in just three years, in twenty twenty-eight. Who's gonna pay for those grid upgrades, new power plants, and costs based on supply and demand? We, the residents, are. Surely the state of Georgia cares about residents and taking care of us, right? No, state legislators have tried this year to pass a bill that would require data centers to pick up their own energy tab, and that didn't even reach the Senate floor. Another bill aimed at suspending tax breaks for Amazon, Meta, you know those guys that are struggling, was vetoed by our governor. So control of Spalding County's future and protection of the residents is left only to you, our commissioners. Not only is the electricity, noise, light, and water concerns from data centers, we'll end up even paying more for computers and their hardware because of the huge amount of purchasing, tax-free, mind you, that data centers will buy like hard drives and ramps. Surely after all these issues, these data centers will last for a while and generate all types of revenue for Spalding County for a long time, right? No. There's a study from Investigator with Data Center Insider Context that says computer hardware inside these data centers will last for no more than three to ten years before they become obsolete and outdated. What happens then? Do they replace the hardware or just abandon the building because of an AI breakthrough or change in processing requirements? Well, I would propose these sites will become abandoned because, well, even those in the giants that are industry say so as well. Sam Altman, maybe heard of him, the founder of ChatGPT, says he sees AI and the spending on facilities as a bubble that could bust at any time. But surely he's along in that thinking, right? Wrong. Mark Zuckerberg, Meta owner slash Facebook, says it collapses a possibility based on past large infrastructure build-outs and how they led to bubbles, and that something like that could happen to the data center explosion. I am asking you, on behalf of the community, to stop this data center and any more in the future, but especially those in agriculture and residential areas. Even if data centers will be approved, we need very specific zoning codes protecting us, the residents. I am not against what can, some may consider progress, but some things are significantly worse than others, and data centers are near the top of the worst. Most of the time, something sounds too good to be true. It is just that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thirty-three seconds.
We have thirty-three seconds left for one more speaker. Thirty-three seconds.
Don't count my, don't count my name as part of that. Greg Burns, fifty-four fifty-one, West McIntosh Road. It's very gratifying. As you know, I've been before this committee, oh, for six months now, and I finally don't feel alone. Thank you to my fellow citizens. I have one word, no, two words, data slum. I don't want Spalding to become a data slum.
Thirteen seconds.
There's thirteen seconds left.
Twenty-two North McDonough Road.
I didn't hear your name, please.
Alfred White. I live at twenty-two North McDonough Road. I just recently moved here. I've been here for a year now. I was born in Thomaston, Georgia. I'm a hundred percent disabled vet. I serve my, my country faithfully. I love this community. I love the neighbors of this community, but to hear what's been said here tonight, things that I didn't know about, this is horrible. This is horrendous. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
Ridiculous.
That's, that's all the side for cons.
That is correct. That is all the time that is available for those who are against. Now, for those who are for, I believe, the applicant, Mr. Stephen Jones.
Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Jones, the law firm of Taylor Duma, address 1600 Parkwood Circle, Suite 200, Atlanta, Georgia. I'm here today representing the applicant, Spalding Investments LLC. You have combined, in this public hearing, a zoning application to C1C and a special exception for a data center. Or issue with the property, this is the overview of the property located on AKB, also known as Highway 16, and North McDonough Road, and also High Falls Road. You'll see here, the property to the south, although not reflected in GIS, has also been rezoned for industrial and PDD in recent years. Zooming in further, you can see that property. I want to talk about the comprehensive plan. There was a comment in the speakers' against that data centers should be in industrial areas, well. Comp plan has designated Highway 16, AKB, as an industrial area for decades now. The current comprehensive plan identifies economic development as a priority. You can see here that one of those places where economic development has been called for in your comprehensive plan is a long AKB, also known as Highway 16 or State Route 16. You can see the subject property outlined in red here, and it is in the employment area. Within the employment area, there are specific areas, but one that's specifically called out on the comprehensive plan is Arthur Cableton Parkway. You can see that here, and that calls for master-planned campus-style business parks or industrial parks. It's exactly what you have here, a master-planned data center campus. Since the last zoning hearing, this board, wait, the last zoning hearing, this board tabled for staff to work through and develop conditions, and for the applicant to address board concerns. We have revised the concept plan here, and staff has drafted conditions tying the development to that concept plan and to the refinements made to that concept plan. I want to be clear that staff's done a wonderful job imposing the conditions that were imposed upon not only the Montana Property Group data center rezoning, but also site-specific conditions here that address some of the concerns that this board has, as well as some of the concerns that you heard tonight from those that spoke against. You look here, we have a 250-foot buffer that we self-imposed along High Falls Road. That's in addition to the 70 that's required under the C1C, and then 100 along other property lines. We've also turned the North McDonough access road into an emergency access only. So you'll see in red here where the arrow is to the Knox box. That would have what's called a Knox box. It's a proprietary device. Only emergency services personnel have access to it through either an actual key or like a garage door clicker, a fancier garage door clicker, but about the same thing. Also, another concern we heard from the board was site vision on North McDonough Road. So we've taken that road and curved it in, so when you're driving on North McDonough Road in either direction, you will not be able to see into the campus because of the curvature of the road. You can see that with that green line shown there. We've also enhanced in that bump out from the concept plan, we provided a landscaping plan there to enhance it and, you know, make it look as, as attractive campus as you enter. This is another condition that was imposed in staff-recommended conditions, like I said, to which the applicant consents, for a berm surrounding the property. In the condition, I believe, that's a four-foot berm with planted evergreens on top. So you would have, again, four feet with six-foot-high evergreens planted at the time, surrounding the entire thing. There are other conditions, too, that relate to making sure this campus is contained from a visual standpoint. Number one, that is leaving as undisturbed as possible that area to the northeast, where you'll see those creek draws, as well as not disturbing the buffer to the greatest extent possible, except for ingress, egress, and utilities. We've also added to assist the county in developing its sidewalk network, five-foot sidewalks along High Falls Road, a five-foot sidewalk along AKB. And then, we also got in touch with the Georgia Department of Transportation. North McDonough Road will become a state route realignment, and so when that happens, we went and asked GDOT, what's the concept plan? They haven't engineered it now, but they do have a concept, and as part of that, they're proposing a 10-foot multi-use path along our side of North McDonough Road. We've incorporated that and coveted, to put that in as well, in addition to the other five-foot sidewalks. We've carved out this area, which is approximately 5.5 acres, at the southwest quadrant of North McDonough Road and High Falls Road for lands to be dedicated for a future park. That's, it's not really usable for our data center campus, but we feel like it can make a great addition or park, or whatever the county chooses to devote it to, instead of just remaining idle land. You can see here the view, this is driving into Griffin on Highway 16, North McDonough on the right. You can see the property is naturally elevated with a natural berm. As part of the development, we'll actually carve the property down to get to an acceptable depth for the airport. I know there were some comments during opposition about that, and so, and we presented this at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, and I'll go back through that, but we had Kim Lee Horn and one of their project managers, who actually helped design the airport, look at this and give us an opinion as to an elevation which would be acceptable, and we will adhere to that, as well as obtain all FAA permitting, which isn't done at the time of zoning, that's done at the time of building permit. But there is a condition which staff has drafted, which we would not be able to construct unless and until FAA approves it, should FAA approval be required. So I do want to go through those staff-recommended conditions, because I felt like they address a lot of the concerns that the board had, a lot of the concerns that we've heard in comments against tonight. And again, the applicant consents to all these. So first and foremost, zone C1C just for a data center. We look at two. It's tied to the concept plan. So everything shown on that concept plan that we just walked through, that would be the layout of the facility. We would impose everything shown on there, the buffers, the berms, the sidewalks, the curved driveways, the Knox box, the location of the buildings itself. It's concept plan-specific, as we would refer to it. Number three, the development will follow the airport overlay, and if necessary, obtain any FAA approval, namely, it's called a Form 7460. Number four, it says that the development and construction shall comply with Section 1403 AB8, which is your data center ordinance, which has architectural requirements in it. Basically, we're gonna build it to look like the lakes at Green Valley. Number five, the development and construction shall comply with buffering and landscape requirements under the data center ordinance and Spalding County's landscaping ordinance. And that will include the perimeter berms and entrance planning shown on the concept plan. The final landscaping plan would be reviewed by the Community Development Department. Similarly, number six, we'll have a tree protection plan also to be approved by the Community Development. Seven, that we'll have a separate Knox box gate on High Falls Road. So again, that's not public access, that's not access for people that work it or are building the data center. That is just for emergency services vehicles. If you remember, that was a condition that you imposed on that Montana Property Data Center. We've drafted that in here, or staff did, and we've revised the concept plan to conform with that. Number eight, and this was a condition, this was a concern that you heard in comments against, all outdoor lighting shall be dark-skylight compliant. That ensures that you won't see and you won't have that light pollution that was shown on one of the public commenter slides. Number nine, this is also a condition coming from that prior data center rezoning, that you'll have super paving, as they call it, along North McDonough Road. That will be temporary, but because GDOT's gonna come in and redo the road, but you will have super paving until then as well, so we're, we're insured that there will be no impact to local roads. Number 10, this also addresses a concern that you heard in speakers before me, is that an acoustical noise study will be performed and provided to the Community Development Department prior to a land disturbance permit, and that sound minimizing walls may be required on the buildings themselves, should the study call for that. But number 11, regardless of that study, there will be acoustic walls around the perimeter of any generated areas. Also, 12, all utility availability letters, water, power, gas, sewer, will be provided also at the time of LDP. 13, will comply with all fire marshal regulations. And then 14, a closed-loop system will be required. Importantly, and we've reviewed this in the last public hearing, we do have an availability from the Water Authority, availability letter from the Water Authority for the water that would be required for this facility. 15 is the areas, and 16 are this, the areas and those buffers that we reviewed in the northeast and southwest corners will remain undisturbed to the greatest extent possible. 17, we already discussed this, but those, the buffers around the land, around the perimeter will be undisturbed to the greatest extent possible and planted. Number 18, at the time of LDP, that public land, that 5.5 acres in the northeast corner will be dedicated, up too fast. Number 19 addresses that berm itself and how it will be planted and constructed. Number 20, and this is, also goes to the maintaining the perimeter, the existing slopes on the shoulder, remember, you saw that there are significant slopes on the property on North McDonough and AKB, and High Falls, to an extent, will be maintained. 21, we've got a lot of conditions, but I think they're all important, and I think staff's done a wonderful job putting them together. A five-foot concrete sidewalk and a 10-foot multi-use path will be installed prior to a certificate of occupancy. Last two, 22 is a reversal clause. If there is not an LDP issued within six years, then this board may initiate a rezoning. And then 22, and this was also something that you heard in comments before me, is a decommissioning plan. Your staff drafted a extensive, I couldn't fit it on all the slides, it's like three pages, decommissioning ordinance, which has been not yet adopted in the second reading, to my understanding, but imposed on this data center and all other data centers, and that's here in condition 23. This is the water availability letter. We're looking at about 16,000 gallons per day, equivalent of 45 homes with a closed-loop system. We have an availability letter from the water provider. We've discussed sewer provision before, we've also discussed power. You'll see that there is a transmission line running through the property. There's also transmission lines in the industrial part to the south, both of which can serve the property. We had some discussion about the Public Service Commission and Georgia Power. Georgia Power's rates are uniform throughout the state, because just because a data center goes in Talbot County doesn't mean rates are gonna raise in Talbot County. The same is true for Spalding County. Residential rates are the same throughout Georgia Power service territory. In fact, the Georgia Public Service Commission adopted an order that ensure, that requires that data centers cause residential rates to decrease, not increase. They also approved another rule that said data centers have to pay for all their infrastructure and generation regardless of whether they leave the state or not. The PSC finally froze residential rates for three years. So the commission has taken active measures to ensure that a lot of these concerns that we see in other places in other states don't happen here in Georgia. Talking about the FAA, and I don't want to belabor this point, because we did discuss it in the last public hearing, but Kim Lee Horn did an aerospace analysis, found that this use was compatible, told us to stay below a certain elevation, which we will, and is also going to assist us in that FAA 7460 if and when it should be required. Also, we've looked at, and voluntarily, making sure that we have obstruction lights on the building, all exterior lighting pointing downwards away, that also is that dark-skylight compliance, and that detention, instead of retention ponds, will be used, and this is a unique one that Kim Lee came up with, using detention in lieu of retention to avoid detracting birds which can interfere with planes. There was also a comment about DRIs. DCA does not currently, does not currently classify data centers as a DRI, period. They will refuse to accept them. They do, however, have a proposed rule. That proposed rule has not yet been adopted, and the way DRIs work is when an application for a zoning, a building permit, a land disturbance permit, a variance, all those kind of things is received, then Spalding County, if is required, if it believes it triggers met, to tell the Regional Commission three rivers. So what'll happen here is when we go to pull an LDP, that will actually trigger a DRI, because it's not just zonings, it's any kind of permitting that will allow the use should the threshold be exceeded. But again, that rule hasn't been adopted yet, and since this application has, is already filed, it's a potato, it's a chicken and an egg, but with a definitive answer. I want to talk, and we've reviewed this on the last one, estimated tax revenue. When you look at the cost of the building itself, the cost of the dirt, and the cost of the personal property inside, a rough estimate's about $1.5 billion, resulting in an annual ad valorem tax generation of approximately $22.9 million. We did some equivalencies, and we went through this in the last public hearing, so I won't belabor this part either, too long, but it's 32% of the overall county budget, 72% of law enforcement, jail, et cetera, and about 20% of the school's budget. So when we look at all that, I think that all of the, the concerns and issues that have been expressed, the staff has drafted conditions to tie this data center to regulations and standards that assured that none of those concerns or fears come to fruition. And with that, I'd ask that you vote consistent with the staff recommendation and vote to approve this with every single one of staff's recommended conditions. Should you have any questions of me or the applicant, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. If not, I'll flip back to the concept plan, so we can look at that while you deliberate. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. Anybody else on four?
No, sir.
All right.
You're speaking for?
Yes.
All right. Please, forgive me, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Four minutes left.
There's four minutes left, just, that's okay, that's, that part doesn't count.
Hi, I'm Lisa Amy. I live at 1111 Birchwood Drive in Griffin, Georgia, and I look at this as an opportunity for Spalding County, to set the standard where other counties like Fette and County open the doors and just say, come on in. Spalding County can actually set the standard and raise the bar. This is, okay, yes, you can have data centers, but there's gonna be, we're gonna live in harmony with them and set these rules that don't hurt our citizens, but bring us in tax revenue. And I think from looking at what y'all have said, is a lot higher than what I went to the Fette County hearings and the Calwade County hearings, because they screwed up. But y'all have reusable water, things like that. I think we just have an opportunity here to set the standards and be able to live in harmony and use the tax revenue coming in to hopefully reduce some of our taxes that we've been carrying the county on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that have signed up.
Do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are out of public hearing? All right, Director.
Okay, lots of information, obviously, tonight. I want to kind of briefly summarize the differences between the plan you saw in August versus the plan you see before you now. Number one, as the applicant said, the clarification of the access on the High Falls Road is an emergency entrance only with a gate and a Knox box. Two, the addition of a five-foot-wide sidewalk along High Falls Road and AKB Parkway, as asked by this board. Three, an addition of a 10-foot-wide multi-use path along the McDonough Road frontage per GDOT standards, also as asked by this board. Four, the setting aside of a 5.5 acres of public land at the intersection of McDonough Road and High Falls Road for a future park. Five, inclusion of a landscape berms along High Falls Road, McDonough Road, AKB Parkway, and a portion of the shared property line between the subject property and the residence at 2060 High Falls Road, that's just the west of the property. Also asked by this board, and that, that mirrors the same landscape berm standard you found in the Montana group data center approval. Six, provision for entrance landscaping, this will be above and beyond the berm landscaping. It'll have some, at the, the turning radii, if approved, it'll have more landscaping at both entrances. Seven, the tweaking of the interior parking layouts, it's a better layout now. And then they provided cross-sections along with the site plan, as you see in your report, show how the development will look from certain vantage points. So that, and they have, it was important, we knew to this board to mirror the conditions in the Montana group data center conditions. We went over these conditions for several weeks, made sure all those standards for that one. that one were incorporated into this one, as well as some additional standards for this one, site-specific things. So we feel the conditions are a whole lot better and mirror what we had proved before. There are, as the applicant said, twenty-three conditions, zoning conditions, to make this a better project, not just a free will, do whatever you want out there. We, we feel like we have contained the request and made it responsible environmentally and several other ways. So we feel the conditions are much improved over the last time you saw it, and staff recommends approval, as did the planning commission.
Okay. Comments from the commissioners?
I, I guess I thought it was a six-foot berm.
Yeah, let's talk about that. Originally, I thought we had a ten-foot berm and a ten-foot trees. But as we sunk this down, is, I want to make sure I'm understanding, we had ten-foot, the last one, we had ten and ten. Then we, this place is five or five-foot, but we have made them, or the, the airport has caused this to have to sink, which causes the same distances.
So we could go with a six-foot tall berm if you wanted, what raised it down definitely from the ten-foot was the fact you had basically ten-foot wide of space and ten feet tall. The slopes of that are way too steep to be manageable. Four is better, six is a possible, but ten's not really possible, it'd be pretty much a sheer cliff or very steep slopes. We could tweak it to go to six-foot tall berm if you wish.
Now, the reason, let me make sure, the reason I'm interested in this is light, noise, people seeing, all that stuff. This is a green county, we want to make sure that people see what we want to see, which is trees, berm, stuff like that.
But you would have the four to six foot tall.
We're going to accomplish that with five or six foot.
Right, well, you're going to have the four to six-foot tall berm, however y'all specify, plus on top of that, not deciduous trees that shed their leaves, but evergreen, either Leyland's or some others, tree species that are specified to be at least two feet wide, six feet tall themselves at time of planting, so they're not little saplings over in the wind. So that's on top of the berm as well. So you'd have, if you had a six-foot berm, you'd have basically twelve feet of height by the time you planted the tree, which will grow, and the berm itself. So you have that wall already, even, even before it's grown a whole lot, you have a decent-sized tree continuous down the berms.
All right, let me make, across the street. At one point, from across the street, across AKB, you could look directly into it. Now.
No, not AKB, South McDonough.
South McDonough. Now, because of the berm and because of sinking, you won't be able to do that.
Not much at all, no, sir, if anything, because the, the buildings themselves will be dropped twenty to thirty feet due to the grating on the property, so they're going to be lower, and you'd have the berm at the right-of-way, which is not dropped, it's at the street level, so, yes.
Okay.
I still like the higher wall, just because, hey, if you have to do a retaining wall, out of bricks or whatever, I, I think that would actually be better for sound, light, everything. So you guys, the data center might want to affirmatively do that anyway, because one of our conditions is, if the sound becomes a nuisance, then you're in violation and you're in violation of the special conditions. So I, I like the higher, the higher walls.
So bear in mind, you've got several, with the buildings themselves, with the acoustic noise study, they'll be provided, they'll be provide some sound barrier material in the buildings. Around the generators, there will be a noise-reducing wall regardless, so you have that in the interior of the site, then you get to the perimeter berm with the trees on the outside.
I don't like the idea of a brick wall, as, not if we're trying to keep it.
I'm also worried that a sidewalk along AKB would simply draw more attention to the site and take away from the kind of wooded aesthetic that we've got right now. I think that actually limits the green space this year, replaces it with concrete. I like the idea of a sidewalk on High Falls and South McDonough, and I think along a four-lane divided highway, I, I think that's, I, I think we should take that stipulation out, that, that doesn't make sense to me.
So when GDOT, Mr. Chairman, when GDOT does the road improvements, they will put sidewalks
At least be quiet out there, we can hear.
When GDOT does a road improvement project, they will put sidewalks if there is crossways. So, so there will also be sidewalks on the other side of the street as well, and then on the other side of AKB. But, you know, we're not sure when that's going to happen. And because of our, our, our requirements, where we are requiring everyone else to put sidewalks in as they develop, for, for us to be able to go to fill in, you know, people can say it's a sidewalk to nowhere, but the next person that builds next to them will connect to that, going either way, so. I, I think that if we wanted to look, nothing in, in the lakes at Green Valley has a wall as a deterrent to sight. I mean, that's part of what we were trying to do, keep it green, keep as many trees as possible, landscape and shrubbery. So I, I don't like the idea of the wall, that's just, just me.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say building a wall, but instead of, you know, a gentle slope up and a gentle slope down, they can have a gentle slope up and, to get to the ten-foot or even eight-foot, and then they plant the top of that, and then if the slope on the backside, they run out of space, whatever they slope down to, and then they run out of space, they just finish that with a retaining wall. I mean, that's, that's something that's pretty doable, is pretty normal. I know that we did that on several locations along AKB where there was just topographical features that forced, you know, a, a quick slope that had to fit the building in, and we didn't compromise on the slope standards. But again, that's kind of, that's just my opinion on those two things.
I, I have one more question. If, if you could put the site design back up. I know that down on North McDonough Road, that's, at that intersection is where the tornado came through. And I honestly did not know that there were people living across the street up the hill, and there's nobody on this side. I'm not trying to tell them how to do their stuff, but the building that appears to be on the back, it says two-story data building, it's on the most westernmost part of this. That is supposed to be the power building, right? Which, which, which one of these buildings is a generator building?
That was the one in the corner there, on the original it was, but I'll let them clarify
That's single building by itself.
Yeah, that was originally set out to be a substation. We don't believe, based on current analysis, that we actually need the onsite substation with respect to generators, generators will be adjacent to each building.
Okay, because I, because I was thinking, if that building were actually a building that housed noise-producing or heat-producing, if you're going to be digging that area out that's next to North McDonough Road, then if there is something with sound, the further down that you have it, the less chance you have of noise coming out. So that's what I'm saying, I'm not trying to tell them how to do their sound, sound design, but it seems like it would make more sense to have that noise-producing, if, if it is that, if that, the, what we're talking about, the noise pollution. That berm on, on the AKB side is a good twenty, thirty feet high. So that's above ground level.
There's an existing berm there, yes, Commissioner.
Right, and, and it will be on that corner as well, so that would probably be the place where you could hide the most noise, if there were a problem with the noise generation, just, just, just a suggestion, because, because up on the hill, you're, you're up higher, there is a residence on this side, and there, there's two residences on that side, so they would be immediately exposed even with the berm. So for me, if we were able to contain that, if they have to build that building, having it in that area would make more sense.
So the generators need to be adjacent to each building, because the generators are going to serve the building? That's why staff's got the condition that says regardless of what the acoustic study says, they have to be enclosed with sound walls.
Okay.
Do we have something in there, David, that talks to how loud it can be? If they put walls up, if they put a sound thing up and it's still too loud, do we have anything that says it can't be over this?
General nuisance ordinance should cover that.
Sorry?
We do not have anything in, in this that specifies a certain max decibel level, nor do we in our noise ordinance. So there's no definition of too loud.
Our, our general nuisance ordinance should, I mean, we have specific, you know, as far as, not, non-decibel level, but the level of father that it is to the neighbors.
You're also going to have to filter out the noise should you do something like that along AKB with constant truck and vehicle traffic.
And the, the planes that are taking off that constant, yeah.
That's as well. You're not going to, it's going to be very hard to distinguish once the airport's built, and other things are on AKB, what's truck traffic, what's plane traffic, what's humming?
Yeah.
So you don't have a base of a quiet woodland feel to.
A base to own.
Measure off of.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address this kind of in general terms right past.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, my, my friend Ron Hoffman got up and spoke first, and I, I, I think he's, I think he's exactly right. I think all the issues that he raised are exactly on point. You know, all the paperwork and stuff, that's why we've had to delay and delay and, hey, we're going to table her again, make sure that's done, table it again, make sure this is done, to check off all sort of the paperwork concerns and all the irritative concerns. We're here tonight, we have, we have gotten those, but I, I want to say that we've gone to the data center in Fayette County, we've gone to the data center in Calhedi County, the data center in, in North Georgia. We've, we've gone, we've seen these, we've heard these, we've talked to the community. My sister-in-law is actually a, a city commissioner in Peachtree City, and so she goes firsthand and collects firsthand that data about, from the citizens, about the one on Highway fifty-four there in Fayette County. The issues there, the county commissioner saw only the dollar money and said, yep, oh man, we're, we'd be so lucky to have this. And they didn't realize that they could restrict them, that they, that they should restrict them, of all the, the problems that they could cause if they're not restricted. I mean, we've all seen the video, I think parts of it were shared tonight, about the water issues that neighbors are having in North Georgia with that data center. Look at the amount of gross water that's being used in Calhedi County. We looked at those issues, those are legitimate issues. You know, we're not kind of a little bit in game, but we have worked, staff has worked hard, our county managers worked hard, and we as commissioners have really put in the work here to go and not only research what the issues could be, but what we could do about it. And so just like I said on Monday, we need to hold these data centers to the extremely high standard and the rules that we've set out, so that those legitimate concerns that other communities have had, we don't end up having. If a data center wants to come here, then it's got to abide by those rules, and not, you know, just have direct line of sites, you know, have the night sky lighting, have the acoustic dampening, use a purple water system so it recycles their water internally as opposed to just flushing through and using millions of gallons a year. It's got to have, for the water that it does discharge, it's got to have the upgraded filtration systems so that it's still lead-certified green, so it's not discharging any kind of chemicals, sediment, you know, metals in, into our water system. We have really, really, really put some rules here, I mean, some draconian rules. And I'm glad that the applicant is, you know, okay with these rules, but frankly, if they weren't, I don't care. I mean, I'm here for our community, and that's what comes first. If a data center wants to come in, great, but they have to abide by our extremely high standards that we've set. Our standards are so high that they're being used as the example for other counties on how they can prevent this same kind of stuff that happened in Calhedi County and Fayette County from happening there. So I think, again, that's why Monroe County is eventually, I believe, going to allow at least the one data center, if not two, to come in, but they're, they're going to adopt our rules first, because they're, they are such a high standard. And it's not like a warehouse project or a manufacturing project, that we have to compete with Tennessee and South Carolina, and, you know, we've got to give tax incentives, once you want to come here and set up there. The data center will take every available spot they can take, they set up here and Tennessee and in North Carolina and everywhere else they can. So we, on the local level, don't have to give any tax incentives here. So as soon as this place gets built, it, it starts generating taxes. There's no pilot, there's no, it becomes straight, straight through. But that said, even if they don't build here, they're going to continue to build elsewhere. So the power issue is the one thing that we, that we don't have any sort of control over. I can't tell them the max amount of power they can use, or, you know, that has to come from green source next. That's a public service commission issue. And I wanted to mention that, just because if, if they're built somewhere else, they're still going to use that power. That said, the Public Service Commission is who controls the rates and what those, those issues are, and I want to remind everybody that we're currently in early voting, and there's two positions on Public Service Commission that are up for election. And the two, the current Public Service Commission has said that they're going to keep these rates low, that they're not going to allow data centers to raise our rate, that the power usage isn't going to change the impact on residential rates, and I just want everyone to remember that when they go to the polls. That's the power, the one issue that we, on, on a county level, can't control. We have specific, very, very high rules for all the other incredibly legitimate concerns, just like my friend Ron said. So I, I, I think he's exactly right, I think we need to, you know, cautiously welcome these data centers with these rules so that they can't cause the, I, I'll give them the grace and say unintended harm, that unintended data consequences that has happened in Fayette County and Calhedi County and elsewhere. Our rules specifically address all of the issues, although that is power, I, I, that's specifically out of my hands, but every other issue that we can't address, we do address, and it's not just a little, to the nth degree. So be, because of all that, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve these with the staff conditions, and, with, you know, with the study conditions that we've discussed tonight, that we've been discussing, so that, you know, if the data center does, even after this, they, they still have to decide if they're going to build here or not, if they're going to build here, they're building up to our extremely high standard.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I want to talk for a second about power. The first one we addressed had power going right beside it. When I was over in Fayette County, they were talking about having to get easement to run to, get to power. Where is the power for this one?
There is a power line that runs directly in the property line.
Inside, the property line?
Yes, sir.
To be able to tap into it, so it's not an issue with easements, all right?
That, that was another issue that we addressed, and I was concerned, absolutely.
Yes, yes, I want to make sure, and I want to make sure everybody heard.
Because we're not going to allow them to do what is in Fayette County, no, no, not here.
Correct. I want to make sure everybody heard, there is no abatements on this at all?
That's correct.
So if that is a tax issue, the people who say you won't get the tax back, they'll, yes, we won't get it till it's built, but once it's built, we get it day one to be able to do that. So there isn't an issue what we've seen before in other places. All right, any other? Uh, any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say one more thing about the taxes if I could. And this is to the commissioners. We've discussed working with the state to create a, uh, floating residential homestead exemption so that we can not just lower the military rate with this additional taxes, but actually put it, which would lower the taxes for everyone, including the data center, but instead put that towards an additional homestead exemption so that the residential homeowners, that their taxes drop uh, significantly quicker than any of the other taxes. Now, we want to keep chipping away at the military rate as we have done ever since I've been elected, but we want to, right now, ninety-four percent of the county taxes are paid for by residents. And that's a wildly disproportionate amount. We need to use this as an opportunity to go back to the tax distribution that was there in the forties and fifties when the mills were paying all the taxes and the residents were paying hardly any of them. This this is that opportunity and the way we do that is by getting, working with the state to get local legislation to empower us to create a floating homestead exemption countywide so that we can, you know, raise that using that additional money. Uh, I I think that is where the rubber meets the road on this, that, you know, we've talked about the level of county services, the amount of taxation, and then the third corner of the triangle being the industrial base. This is a huge shift in the industrial base and we need to use that opportunity to directly lower the taxes to the homeowners. And we do that through that, uh, floating homestead exemption. So I hope you guys will stick with me and stay the course on asking the state to to allow us to do that. That's not something that is normally done, but they can do it through local legislation. So I've already spoken with Marty Harbin, uh, Karen Maye, and Beth Kemp, uh, about doing that. They seem very impetuous about it. So I just want to remind us that ultimately that's sort of the goal on the back end here. But upfront, the goal is we got to protect our citizens from what's happened in other counties by making sure these rules get done and these limitations get put on here so that those issues can't happen here over the data center comes to fall again.
Okay, uh, David, do you have any issues with anything you've heard tonight or before on this? I want to open this up just in case there's anything there. I'm going to ask the same thing of, uh, our legal counsel in just a second.
I do not. I do indeed do points, if you approve this, I need two points of clarification, whether or not sidewalks on AKB or not, and the height of the berm, so.
Uh, all right, quiet, please. Everybody's had their opportunity to talk. Let's let us finish up with this now. All right. Uh, it's attorney?
Mr. Chairman, from the standpoint of zoning, a used Saka data center should be within a an industrial zone, which is what David's draft ordinance has proposed. He also has identified and imposed decommissioning requirements uh, in the event the data center does not stay for the length of time that's anticipated. I would.
Nick, James is asking you to get closer to the mic, please.
With regard to development and the comments you heard tonight related to electric rates, the reality is most of these data centers will not be constructed until after the three-year period of the rate freeze is expired. And let's be clear on that, that's almost certainly going to be the case. Excuse me. But from the standpoint of land use and from the standpoint of zoning, it is appropriate to be on AKB because we have planned that for industrial development since two thousand and four. Um, and it is the only area, in my view, that is really appropriate for industrial, uh, plan developments because of the nature of its proximity to the interstate, the fact that AKB is our conduit for traffic to the interstate, and because we will have more infrastructure out there and along AKB than any other place in the county.
Okay, uh, county manager, you've been on tours to go look at these. Uh, next week, you're going to go to Virginia on top of that to look for some more to pass out to all hundred and fifty-nine counties. Thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I believe this is, um, in line with what staff is making the recommendation for approval. It's, uh, it seems to be the right location, uh, for this particular facility. And every, uh, condition that you've asked for has been accepted by the developer. Uh, and I believe this would be a a good benefit for our community.
Okay, all right.
Can I make one more comment? It is important to remember, this is not bitcoin mining, which is essentially done in little, it's essentially not, it it bitcoin mining is essentially the development of computers in many warehouses and little storage units. And we have, I think wisely in the ordinance that David draft has drafted, defined bitcoin differently and said, it's not an approved land use here. And that is, that is significant. And we have had several inquiries, both when Sylvia was here and since David's been here regarding people who want to come here and do bitcoin mining. I don't mind people mining on a fake currency if they choose and they want to speculate with their money on it. But when it's in little cubicles in many warehouses that make loud noise, we have appropriately suggested that they need to go elsewhere.
Okay, all right, last comment from any of the commissioners? Okay. We have a motion and we have a second already done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Let's be clear, this is with the conditions that are proposed.
Yeah, excuse me.
You're voting on item eleven right now, just the rezoning. The other one will be a separate vote.
All right. Item eleven, what is, what is item eleven? I want to make sure we say all the right words.
Is the rezoning of this to, uh, C one C for the data center campus with the staff conditions?
That's the motion. James made it.
That was my motion, yes.
All right, and that's the second. We have a motion and a second. We're all square on that, what we're voting for? All right, all those in favor, signify by both raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, five zero. Item, item number twelve.
How can you do this to our county?
You're talking about the quality of life. You don't give a damn about that.
Draft proposal.
Item.
Never want to y'all out. You better start looking for a young child. If you wouldn't build it in front of your property, why do I have to build your mine?
How much are you getting paid?
My backyard and my side door can have airports. End of day, I said, I appreciate that guy. I hope I.
Why do they build the power plant direct line from our house to the data center? They're saying that they're not going to need more power.
I can't believe y'all would do this to our county.
Item number twelve.
Item number twelve, application twenty-five zero eight S five eighty-five Spalding Investment LLC. Owner fifty, South McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot fifteen of the third land district, parcel number two one nine zero six zero zero one, consisting of one hundred twenty-seven point four five acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for proposed data center campus per C one C manufacturing light requirements.
Mr. Allen? Any comments on number twelve?
Yes, sir, I do not. It's the same, uh, use as discussed in item eleven. It's just the special exception part of it. Recommendation for approval as before with the exact same approval conditions as the rezoning.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-five dash O eight S. It's a special exception for proposed data center campus.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, just for a minute, um, just the two points of clarification, sidewalk on AKB or not and the height of the berm?
My, uh, Ms. Quinn, my answer is yes, and at least six foot. I'm willing to talk high. Yeah.
The sidewalks on AKB keep and six-foot berm. All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right, public hearing. Just take your time.
Sorry.
Yep, take your time.
Item number thirteen, public hearing, proposed text amendment to appendix four zoning ordinance of Spalding County pertaining to necessary revisions and improvements to standards and processes for event centers.
I would enter a motion to, uh, pu- open public hearing for the purpose of hearing from those who have signed a petition to speak in support or opposition of this amendment.
Motion to go in public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're now in public hearing.
Is there anybody to speak?
We have no one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
Motion to go out of, come out of, uh, public hearing.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, five zero. Item number fourteen.
Mr. Chair, number fourteen, proposed text amendment to appendix four zoning ordinance of the Spalding, of Spalding County pertaining to necessary revisions and improvements to standards and processes for event centers.
Mr. Allen, uh, Mr. Allen, would you please review the amendments with us?
Okay, uh, due to some circumstances over the summer with some noise complaints with event centers and certain, uh, the volume of amplification permits we were getting from event centers that were already approved. Uh, we had a workshop, I believe it was, in July. Uh, we had a draft form of the event center noise regulations then. Uh, there was quite a few revisions and additions to it. And what you have before you tonight is reflecting the revisions and additions and some more additions I put in there as well to try to flesh out this process for event centers with their, uh, certain events with their outdoor amplified noise, uh, to kind of flesh out the process more. Uh, to have a certain standard for it that that makes good common sense, but also protects residents and also some, some processes for penalties and things if things go wrong. So what you have before you in red, basically in bold red here, is basically what changed since the workshop and the draft ordinance of this in July. So this is reflecting all that we talked about at that workshop.
So, Mr. Chairman, we, and I can go back a little bit, what we talked about then was like having someone to stand next to the property line, so that is all gone. Right, the person standing next to the property line of hearing, or is that the two-depth, two-law enforcement people?
That is the the part in section four A here that is still there. It got moved from a hundred-foot stake away from the event center on the property to the property line itself between that and the neighboring property.
Okay.
Okay.
So I wanted to to talk about, you know, we have places that are event centers that are inside. And we all recognize, and I think this addresses, this is saying that if the noise or the sound is lasts longer than five minutes, then clearly there's a violation. But I'm not sure that that's where the problem is. I'm feeling like the problem is if we officially have any outdoor event centers other than the one that's out on Aerodrome Way. But people are making events, not event center, but they're having events if they are an event center. It's not a party in your backyard. This is an an event. So what in this helps us to address these outside things?
Um, well, the scope was at first just the event centers and the fact that they were already approved and and okay, we've approved them for that, but we can still have some noise complaints and how to address them. We can, we haven't really done what you're saying with your average amp permit that you're going to get in here over the next couple of weeks. This this could be a launching pad for that.
Okay.
By determining the noise from the property line, things of that nature. But this is more focused on the established event centers, but you could certainly, as I said before, use this as a launching pad for the individuals, so.
I mean, I I like this because I think it it's fair to the business.
Yes, this does a good job for the event centers.
You know, you can't leave your doors open all night and and, you know, that's just kind of what what that is. We have that downtown and and any other places. But and and I, and like I said, I like this, but I think we need that extra.
I agree.
About what are we allowing people to do in a residential neighborhood and they're not licensed? Because I think that's where.
If they're not licensed, they are in violation of the zoning ordinance by definition.
Okay.
It's true. All right, so you would send the sheriff out or code enforcement to issue a citation for the illegal operation of an event center in violation of the zoning ordinance. That's the way you cover that. What what David has drafted is for the event center that's approved.
Yeah, okay, David did exactly what we asked him to do as far as I'm concerned, reading through it, so I'm okay with that. What I'm interested in is a house that somebody is out there and all of a sudden they're, they have a band and they've got their amps out there and they're blasting everybody, uh, to do it. My, I had two constituents write to me and said, hey, why don't you just put a moratorium on anybody outside event centers that are trying to do outside, uh, music, amplification?
Are you talking about an occasional event or a place where they're consistently happening?
Well.
See, that's the wash.
Yeah, really, she was noise.
Because you're having it over here at this person's farm, then you're having it over here at the other person's farm the next time, but it's still you having it. So, so, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't want, I, you know, people should be able to have a party in their backyard, you know, for somebody's birthday. But we already see the abuse that comes with this. So maybe that's what the next piece that we need to do. And maybe we may need to do a moratorium on outside amplifications for right now until we get this this together.
We got, we got to get a handle on it because it's it's.
It's beating us down.
That is exactly right. It's not what we want to have, it's not how we want things done. We have people out there that are just picking it up and saying, all right, I'm picking up my, uh, amplifier. I'm hooking it up to my iPhone and I'm just blasting music.
All night.
Uh, you know, all night. I I'm against that concept, so everybody understands. The people who know how to do it, event centers, I'm okay with them. We give them rules and they know how to do it and they do it. But the next-door house that all of a sudden they want to have a party, this is University of Georgia playing Alabama, and we're cranking up the stuff and everything. Uh, that's not okay with me.
And the thing is, I mean, you already got laws and ordinances on the book that take care of it. You got like disorderly house. I mean, if you, you have a party this weekend, they got called out there. Have a party the next weekend, get called out there, three or four times, issue the owner a disorderly house. And we, I I I agree with you, we shouldn't have a say-so of saying, Islam was like giving you your blessing to to jam out to midnight. And I don't, I I don't like personally doing that. Um, it's just, I, like I said, use the laws that's on the books.
I, you know, I think I saw a constituent who wrote to me and said, hey, I, it was so bad, I called the sheriff. And the sheriff said, nothing I can do, you all approved it.
Yeah, it's it's, I I I think we'll do less harm by just accepting this for event, uh, planned event centers and then doing a moratorium until we get what we're going to do about outside.
This is a necessary phase one for the Mystic Acres, providing us some clarification.
Yeah, we're all, I I'm all good with this. This is no issue. We're talking about phase two. All right, how does everybody feel about moratorium?
I don't have a problem with it.
James?
On out, moratorium on outside.
And the thing is, the moratorium is not telling them they can't do it. It's just telling them that we're not going to say they can do it.
Right, and if you're making a lot of noise, the sheriff's going to get called.
All right, so first, let's let's. All right, so, first, let, let's take care of, of what's in front of us.
Okay.
Uh, have we had a motion?
You do not.
Okay, I would, we're at sixteen, right?
Fourteen.
No, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed text amendment to Appendix Nine zoning ordinance of Spalding County pertaining to necessary revisions and improvements to standards and processes for event centers.
All right, so, uh, yeah, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's make sure, this is phase one. We're all square on that?
Mm-hmm.
And phase two, we're gonna start, put, we'll put a moratorium, okay, first, okay. All, all those in favor of, uh, item fourteen, say aye.
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 Uh, James has dropped off four of his events.
All right, four, zero, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to amend the agenda to add the item of calling for a moratorium on these event centers?
I'll say. I have a motion and a second.
To amend?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four, zero.
I would like to make an, uh, a motion to call for a moratorium for, to not allow any outside, um, amplification permits until after, uh, planning and development has an opportunity to bring us phase two of what we could possibly do with outside, um, amplification.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, motion carries.
So, the moratorium will include prohibitions on the pop-up raves that y'all have in Sun City?
They're gonna get the sheriff calling them too.
Just smiling, no idea.
No.
Yeah. Okay, all right, item number fifty, thank you. Item number fifteen, public hearing.
Item number fifteen, public hearings. Proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four zoning necessary revisions and additions to proposed Appendix N Historic Property Preservation Ordinance per the requirements of OCGA subsection forty-four ten twenty et sec, um, the Georgia Historic Preservation Act.
I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second, did I hear a second? I have a se- motion and a second. All those in favor, please si- signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, motion carries. We're now in public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Motion to come out of public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, mo- we're out of public hearing. Item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen, proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four zoning necessary revisions and additions to proposed Appendix N Historic Property Preservation Ordinance per the requirements of OCGA subsection forty-four ten twenty et sec, the Georgia Historic Preservation Act.
I like the fact that we're gonna have a, a preservation committee. I think, I think that's really good. The city, um, basically has a committee of that nature, and they look at what the aesthetics of the, the neighborhood looks like around where-
Thank you.
Where the development is. And so, I think that will offer us an opportunity for people in the community to also participate in this. But I also like the fact that there's teeth in, in this that says, as a board, we can go back and look at requests to demolish historic preservation, uh, structures, and, you know, we can decide if it's worth just demolishing or, or if it's safe, it's something to be saved. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
David, any comments you want to make about it?
I know, sir, this has gone through several reiterations, uh, since the summer. Uh, the zoning attorney has thoroughly reviewed it and come up with the various parts of the state statute that have to be in this, this local code, so it checks out with all that now.
Public, uh, uh, uh- Planning Commission, thank you.
Uh, approval.
Okay.
It, it, now, just refresh me, what, what were the penalties that we could, if, if there's violations of these things? Does that just come to the Board of Commissioners?
So, it's, it's the standard, uh, if there's violations, the standard citation language that you have-
Okay.
In the zoning code.
We just always look to see if there's any teeth for us to do the thing that we said we were gonna do. Okay.
All right, do I have motion to approve?
Motion to approve the ordinance, uh, protect, the proposed text amendments to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Nine zoning necessary revisions and additions for the Historic Property Preservation Ordinance.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, right there.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Four, zero, motion carries. Item number five. Other business.
Other business. Second reading and, uh, ordinance for text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four zoning article two, adding various definitions of solar energy systems.
Why don't you go talk to the law enforcement people?
All right, uh, no public hearing required. This is held from the August meeting. Uh, first reading approved in spring, some revisions over the summer, all revisions are now final.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, what we actually asked David to go back to do was to address people being able to put, um, a solar panel unit in their backyard if you lived on less than one acre. And, uh, the language that is adopted here specifically talks about if you live in a subdivision or if you're in a larger space. Um, I like the fact that, that if you're in a, a small, under an acre, you can't have that unit on the side of your house where it might be reflective of somebody, to somebody else's property. So, other than that, I think we were okay with the ordinance as it stood, we just wanted that piece because that was some of the, people were wanting to be able to use a solar unit for the heat their pool or, uh, the poolhouse or something like that. So, I, I, I like what we have that he's presented to us tonight.
Okay, and that was your motion?
So, my motion is to approve on second reading, uh, the ordinance defining the various definitions of solar energy systems.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Uh, David, good job pulling this all together time after time after time. This was not one of those one-and-done things, I appreciate it. All right, all those in favor, please signify-
And I'd like to thank, there's an individual in this room that worked very hard on it too.
Yes.
So, I'd like to thank him for his input and everything.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that, that was helpful. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, number two, second reading and ordinance for text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four zoning, adding various solar energy system principal and accessory uses to permitted uses, section five oh three, six oh three, six oh four A, seven oh three, seven oh three A, eight oh three, eight oh three A, nine oh three, ten oh three, eleven oh three, eleven oh three A, twelve oh three, thirteen oh three, fourteen oh three, fourteen oh three A, fifteen oh three, seventeen oh three A, seventeen oh three B, eighteen oh three, nineteen oh three, twenty-two oh five B, and twenty-two oh three C.
There's no public hearing required, this was held in August. The first reading was approved in the spring, some revisions over the summer, all revisions are now final. Uh, Mr. Allen, would you like to make any comments about this?
It's the same thing, y'all just approved, but we had the definition section separate from the actual body of the various solar uses in each zoning district, so it's the same, I mean, text amendment.
That, that's the numbers, all of our zoning classes. Okay, motion to approve on second reading the ordinance for text amendments of the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Nine zoning, adding various solar energy systems principal and accessory uses to permitted uses, section numbers as the county manager has read previously.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, motion carries, thank you. Item number six, executive session, discussion or deliberation regarding personal matters, including appointments, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee as authorized o- under OCGA fifty fourteen three B two, discussion or deliberation in the acquisition of real estate as authorized by OCG fifteen four three B four, and consultation with legal counsel regarding pending or potential litigation, settlements, claims, or other legal matters as authorized by OCG fifteen fourteen two one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go on executive sessions for the previously read purposes.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, we're now in executive session. We will come back out when this is-
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a s- motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We are adjourned.